I'm going to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order for October 27th, 2014. We have no public hearings tonight, so if the clerk would read the first item.
Item number one, under original consideration, a resolution reappointing Mary Delisandro to the Board of Assessment Review.
Without objection on consent, item number two.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing the transfer of 1615 Eastern Avenue and 768 State Street.
Again, without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim brought by Nerola Hupal.
Discussed in Claims Committee, without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing the sale of 14 Myers Alley, 1035 Barrett Street, and 1039 Barrett Street.
Okay, I believe we were going to have an amendment to this resolution, Ms. Porterfield?
I'd like to move to amend this resolution and that the former resolution be voided, Resolution Number 2013-157.
Thank you. Is there a second to that amendment? Mr. Riggi, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, then, with that said, without objection, we'll put this on consent. Okay. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing the sale of 635 McCollum Street.
Without objection on consent, item number seven, or excuse me, six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the settlement of Schenectady Local Development Corporation Loan Number CDB07SLDC3.
Without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim brought by Alexander Marcano.
Also discussed in Claims, without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution honoring the Schenectady-based CDTA drivers who took home the top prizes in the New York State Annual Bus Rodeo.
All right, this will be taken out of order, Mr. Riggi will present that. Okay, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution honoring the Schenectady Police Department for receiving the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee's 2014 Chair Award.
This will also be taken out of order, Mr. Kozier will present that. Item number 10.
Item number 10, under Contract and Supply, a resolution awarding a contract for slope stabilization to Provincial Contractor Services in the amount of $54,892.0.
Discussed in Committee, without objection on consent, item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution recognizing Community Fathers, Inc. for their Second Annual Fatherhood Conference.
If this will also be taken out of order, Ms. Porterfield will present that. If there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus, I'll declare this meeting closed and open the City Council meeting for October 27th, 2014, and ask you to rise for the invocation by the Reverend Dr. Bill Levering from First Reform Church.
Let us pray. Almighty and ever-loving God, we pray for freedom, and we pray for the freedoms that are enacted in this country that we love. We pray for the upcoming election, may the preparations be civil, may discussions be polite, may our voting be rigorous, and may we do the will of what is best for all. We ask your blessings on the procedures of the elections and the deliberations of this body as they work for the common good. Be with all of us as we try to do what is right. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I'm going to ask Nick Marcheron to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Porazo.
Present.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here.
Mr. Kozier.
Here.
Mr. Riggi.
Here.
Mr. Mootivaren.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, so we have three out-of-order resolutions. The first one will be the CTDA rodeo, Mr. Riggi will present.
I'd like to thank Mr. JR, whole-tailing my neighbor, he brought this to my attention. Come on up, guys. These drivers here representing CDTA won statewide bus rodeo. We have a winner, and we have other persons that placed well in the competition, and I think this truly says, you know, take the bus and leave the driving to them, because they did fare very well in this competition, and it's something to be proud of, and brings a lot of pride to Schenectady, and I thank them for all of this. So let me read this resolution.
Okay. And I'm going to suggest they turn around so they can be on camera. Come on in to take the picture if you want to.
A resolution congratulating those Schenectady-based CDTA drivers who took top prizes in the New York State Annual Bus Rodeo, and the rodeo was R-O-A-D-E-O, so it's rodeo. Whereas the city of Schenectady prides itself on being the home to many champions, and whereas the Capital District Transit Authority hosted the annual New York State Bus Rodeo Competition featuring bus drivers from throughout the state who competed on a rigid and scored course consisting of several different driving challenges. And whereas the city-based drivers featured prominently in the leaderboard for the duration of the competition. And whereas Bobby Venturillo, who has over three years of experience with the Transit Authority, won eighth place overall. And whereas Corey Bigsby, who has eight years of experience with the Transit Authority, finished fourth place overall. Whereas Keith Straight, who has 27 years of experience with the Transit Authority, finished third place overall. And whereas Robert Rizzuto, who has over 28 years of driving experience with the Transit Authority, won the September 2014 competition and is its reigning champion. And whereas Mr. Rizzuto is no stranger to placing well in the rodeo. He won CDTA's Bus Rodeo Local Competition held in June 2014. He also won the local event in 2007 while placing second in both the 2001 and the 2011 rodeo, along with a third-place finish back in 2003. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the achievements of Mr. Venturillo, Bigsby, Straight, and Rizzuto, whose exploits and their professional talents have brought acclaim to the city of Schenectady. Madam Chair, I move this resolution.
All right, is there a second, Mr. Mootivaren, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Would have the winner say a few words, please? No words to say? Well, I just want to thank you for your achievements, and, you know, this is great, and three of these drivers live in the city of Schenectady also. They're based out of the Maxim Road facility, but this is something for Schenectady to be proud of, and again, take the bus, it's cheap, you've got safe drivers, what else can you ask for? I think I'll be taking it more from now on. Thank you, gentlemen.
Again, congratulations. Okay, our second out-of-order resolution will be presented by Mr. Kozier.
Have the members of the Schenectady Police Department come forward inside the rail, our chiefs. Madam President, if I may?
You may.
Thank you. We have a resolution honoring the Schenectady Police Department for receiving the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee's 2014 Chair Award. Whereas recently, the Schenectady Police Department was recognized for the innovative and statewide leadership role in the data-driven approaches to Crime and Traffic Safety Initiative, or D-DAX. As whereas, D-DAX integrates local-based crime and traffic crash data to determine the most effective methods for deploying law enforcement and other resources, and has the goals of reducing crime, crashes, and traffic violations. And whereas, the Schenectady Police Department became the first agency in New York State to successfully implement D-DAX in the fall of 2012. And whereas, the department was the featured presenter in New York's first D-DAX follow-up roundtable in September of 2013, sharing their success stories and helping other police agencies identify common needs, challenges, and issues. And whereas, the department's success and ability to showcase the benefits of D-DAX to New York police agencies provides immense credibility to the program and enhances Schenectady's reputation statewide. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Schenectady pause in their deliberations to thank all the members of the Schenectady Police Department for their hard work and to congratulate them on receiving this outstanding award. Madam Chair?
Can you move it, seconded by Ms. Porazo? All in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank Council President King, Mr. Kozier for sponsoring this resolution, and the entire City Council, and all the residents of the city of Schenectady, really for recognizing the department for our efforts in bringing down crime and crashes, which is the operational model that D-DAX is. I'd like to, again, under Chief Falvo's command, this is really a function of the Patrol Division, under Chief Falvo's command, and specifically the Traffic Initiative, under the direction of Lieutenant Todd Stickney and Sergeant Patrick Morris. They're deploying their resources in what we identify as hotspots throughout the city to, again, to bring down crime and crashes. So since 2012, we've brought down our crashes by about 30, I'm sorry, compared to our five-year average, year-to-date, we're down about 35 percent in terms of our crashes. In terms of our crime, we're down about 20 percent. So we've had some real success with this, and I've got to thank and recognize Nick Marcheron. Nick is the New York State Chiefs Association liaison to the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee. And Nick introduced us to D-DAX in 2012 and worked with us every step of the way to develop and the analytical products that are telling us where we need to be and when. So we've got to thank you, Nick, for really staying with us and working with us every step of the way. As you know, you probably don't know, the mayor, he's a Bellevue guy, you probably don't know, but the mayor's been involved since the very beginning as well. He was actually, I think he may have mentioned the resolution, one of the videos the Chiefs Association did in January 2013, and again, distributed through the Chiefs Association. The mayor was a big part of that, talking about the partnership and the buy-in from, you know, from the executive level within, you know, in our particular jurisdiction. So he was a big part of that, and he recently presented at a Smart Cities Conference on D-DAX. So again, words getting out, what we're doing, we've had some success, and we're sharing with anyone who'll listen to us. Again, thank you, everyone, and, you know, Commissioner Bennett's been a real supporter of this initiative, and again, we've had some real success. Again, thank you very much.
Great, Chief, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, and our third out-of-order resolution is for the Community Fathers, and Ms. Porterfield will present that.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the members of Community Fathers behind the rail. All right. Come on over, there's a lot of them. Okay.
You have a floor.
The resolution recognizing Community Fathers for their Second Annual Fatherhood Conference. Whereas, Community Fathers began as a weekly support group for fathers, and in 2009 became incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. This organization is intended to, as a grassroots empowerment group for men who are committed to strengthening their roles as fathers. And whereas, their self-established goals are to increase positive contact between fathers and their children, provide access to resources, and to offer community support for active and competent fathering. They strive to educate and empower individual fathers to become active participants in their communities, and to help guide and empower fellow fathers to do the same. And whereas, the model used by Community Fathers is a holistic one, and encompasses a broad base of resources, including, but not limited to, a certified therapeutic case management component, a paralegal advocacy component, a housing component through Schenectady Municipal Housing Authority, and an educational support component. Programs include the Fathers Reentry Program in the Schenectady County Jail, and a certified domestic violence for the Baderis program. In addition, Community Fathers has developed fatherhood support groups in the Schenectady New York Drug Court and the Trinity Alliance Program in Albany, New York. And whereas, Community Fathers held its Second Annual Fatherhood Conference on October 24th, 2014, with the theme "Community: Restoring Fatherhood." The focus of the conference was twofold. First, to bring awareness and insight into the problems that young fathers face, the pitfalls that many unfortunately fall into, and how this affects our communities. The second, to explore the qualities that constitute successful fatherhood, and how to successfully develop these qualities in fathers who may be experiencing difficulties, thereby ending cycles of generational fatherhood incompetency and helping to rebuild families. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council and the mayor of the city of Schenectady pause in their deliberations to recognize Community Fathers on the occasion of their Second Annual Fatherhood Conference, and to say thank you for your positive contribution to the city of Schenectady. Madam President, I move the resolution.
Okay, it's moved, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye.
And I'd just also like to be able to say that I've watched this group as from when their humble beginnings to where they are today, and it was really something to watch, and I saw the work that went into it, and especially from Walter Simkins, who is a personal friend. And I just want to say to all of the fathers, the work that you've done, I'm just really amazed by the things that you get accomplished in, and I appreciate what you do to our community, to help young fathers, older fathers, it doesn't matter, fathers who need help, to get help. So I'd like to offer you an opportunity to have something to say and introduce the fathers.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for this opportunity to be here and receive this award, but I'd rather William Levis, our program director, to be able to say what he needs to say to the group.
Well, it's a pleasure to be here, for one. I think it speaks volumes to be standing here in front of you today with the vision of Walter Simkins and the essence of what it is that he believes in empowering the fathers of the community to help rebuild the community. We see a lot of things going on, we are in different venues of the community, and we have a lot of experience, we have a lot that we want to give. And, you know, behalf of the Community Fathers and myself, I'd like to say that, you know, to help rebuild Schenectady, challenge accepted.
Go introduce.
This is Mr. Richard Jackson. He works with us in the Schenectady Reentry Program at the Schenectady County Jail. This is Mr. Charles Flood. He successfully graduated from our Drug Court Program. Mr. Eddie Polanco, he does the Drug Court Program as well, and he also facilitates getting ahead. Mr. Anthony Ortiz, he successfully completed the Domestic Violence Program, and he also is a Domestic Violence Facilitator right now. And that's lovely, Carlos Caraballo.
Thank you so much.
Okay, again, thank you. Congratulations. All right, we have no public hearings, so we'll move to approval of the minutes from October 14th, 2014. Okay, Mr. Kozier moves it, Ms. Porterfield seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Tuesday, October 27th, 2014. Under official, a letter dated October 27th, 2014, from Christopher Wallin, city engineer, recommending the award of the Miners' Street Slope Stabilization Contract be awarded to Provincial Contractor Services in the amount of $54,892.0. Under general, there are none, under petitions, there are none.
All right, we'll move to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Okay. Then we'll go on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up to speak, and that's P.D. Vorus.
I'm P.D. Vorus, and I live in the city. I want to talk about, number one, the appointment of Mary Delisandro to the Board of Assessment Review. My only problem with this is that Mary Delisandro is a very active member of the Real Estate Board, and she's also on the zoning board, and she participates in the programs that are held here on Sundays to sell the local real estate. And so I just question the amount of diversity in this large community of so many people involved in this interest and this adventure that the city is involved in. I really would like, I don't get why you can't have more diversity than to have people doing double duty when they have jobs that really are 24/7 to begin with. And then the other, there's something that's not on the agenda, but there's information in here about stabilization of land on Minersy Avenue. I'm not aware of any land there that needs stabilization, but you've gone and taken quotes from John McDonald Engineering Firm to do the work, so, but there is no backup in the agenda to go along with it, but so I don't understand it, and if somebody can explain to me what on Minersy needs stabilization, other than like the city of Schenectady, which is subject to many movements of the sand, it's not potholes we're dealing with, it's sinkholes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we will move to approval of the legislative agenda. Mr. Kozier moves it, seconded by Mr. Mootivaren, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll now move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have eight people signed up to speak. The first one is Brenda Jean.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Councilmen Women, and Mr. Mayor. I would like to start by bringing to your attention that in the beginning of all of this, you were all unaware of what was going on at your city holding facility. Unfortunately for you all, you can't say that. Now we've made you aware, and unfortunately, you have to see us every two weeks. But obviously, there was some truth to what we were saying, or you would not have addressed these issues in your comprehensive plan that was put together by your police department. While your comprehensive plans seem to be a great start, there still needs to be some level of transparency here. The public, volunteers, and as far as we know, rescue organizations are still not allowed in the holding facility. We just want to know why. It doesn't necessarily have to be us, Roddy Empire Rescue, although we would still love to be able to help donate food, blankets, toys for the dogs that are there. We hope that you're not just telling us what you think we want to hear, just to pacify us. We would love to be able to see these changes that you've spoke of, what you have implemented, and what we may be able to still help implement for you. I guess my, in summary, I guess I would just like to know what the basic standards are for the care for these animals are moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. We've got two problems. Number one thing, people stop at the light to make a left-hand turn, but they don't want to wait for that arrow, so we've got to do something about that before somebody gets hurt. And things are bad enough, like the people going through the red lights, they don't, no patience to wait for the arrow. Arrow Boulevard, State Street, they, I don't know why they want to be in such a big hurry. It doesn't make sense. So we've got to do something about it. And we've got to do something about the lower part of Liberty Street, bump, 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 holes and everything, so that needs to be fixed. And that's about it right now.
Okay. Thank you. Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I would like to thank everyone that was there at the Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association Awards Dinner. And, Madam President, I would like to thank you so much for doing that dance that you did. And the next thing is, we'll be doing the smoke alarm again, and want everybody, it's coming on to winter time, and people will be putting on their hats and stuff, and we'll be going around doing this, the smoke alarm again, and anyone that don't, did not, I did not go to their houses, please call me. My number is 728-8419. Please call, because at these times, we need to have those smoke alarms. Next thing, October 4th is Election Day. November 4th is Election Day, sorry, is Election Day. And Hamilton Hill, I need everybody to come out there. We have a problem with the women's rights, and we need people to come out there and vote. You need to go out and vote. Don't tell me that you can't vote. You go out there and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Callaher.
Sorry, moving a little slowly, the ankle isn't quite what it used to be. First and foremost, I want to thank the community for the outpouring of support after the passing of my mother-in-law, Isabel Crandall. She was a paraprofessional at Mont Pleasant Middle School, a volunteer at Vale Community, at the Vale Cemetery, and there's been such a great outpouring of support and condolences, and I just want to thank the community in its entirety for everything that they've done and their condolences. Regarding the proposed budget, I'd like to find out, and I've mentioned this in past times here at the rail, that I wanted to find out what the information is on doing recovery on the outstanding traffic violations, which has the ability to bring up to about $4 million into our coffers here, which that alone could actually reduce the property taxes between 8 and 12 percent. Also, I wanted to make a proposition, propose that some of these, one of these blighted facilities, or several of these blighted facilities that are all together, be rehabilitated for some of our homeless vets in the area. Now, in surrounding communities and counties, Saratoga County has Vet Help, we have the Soldier On Project going on down in Albany County over near the airport, and there's no reason, with the amount of homeless veterans that we have right here in the city of Schenectady, we can't, number one, take care of those resources for us, and they're truly tremendous resources, and take care of those and utilize them to the city's advantage. These people served our lives, and we can, and they will continue to serve if we provide for them. There are, also wanted to find out, and as Ms. James alluded to earlier, with the Schenectady Animal Control Shelter, we haven't heard much about updates as far as what's been happening with it or what the latest is. So if one of the folks from the City Council here could provide that information, I'm sure that it would be truly a benefit. The Schenectady American Legion, Sons of the American Legion are having a food drive, and we would like people to drop food off over at the American Legion, we're there every Saturday morning, and people can drop it off. This food drive is for Thanksgiving. It will stay right here in the community, as well as some of the American Legion breakfasts that are in the area. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
Thank you. Vicky Salvo.
Hello. All right. I just wanted to let you all know that we put it out there on Facebook that there might be a chance that we can volunteer to help the dogs, and I checked, and there are a whole bunch of people who would really like to volunteer to go in and walk the dogs, visit and play with the dogs. They're willing to sign waivers if that's what it takes for the city to be able to legally let us in there. We all look forward to doing our part to not only make sure the dogs stay in holding as good as it can be, given current resources, but to also make, like, virtual movie stars out of the dogs, to find them homes before the city has to put them down. I am more than willing to set up and manage a Facebook page for free to help the Schenectady dogs find their owners or people to adopt them. Please just let me in so I can start helping those dogs ASAP. I want to know which dogs are in there at all times, and which dogs could you... I want to know which dogs are in there at all times, and which dogs could use our help in finding homes. Even if I and other volunteers can't touch them yet, for whatever silly legal reasons, at least let me in to help publicize dogs that are in need of homes, because much like keeping a shelter, keeping a Facebook page is not really a police officer's job. And we are obviously willing to do more than the city is when it comes to finding homes for them, so please let us in there as soon as possible. We look forward to helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Johnson.
Good evening, City Council. We're now more than four months into our very public attempts to ensure that the city of Schenectady operates the animal control facility in a manner that's safe, compliant with the law, and further humane. This is not to minimize the efforts of the many people who've attempted to have the inhumane conditions addressed in a more private manner by speaking with and meeting with members of government, who then chose to do little or nothing to stop the abuse and killing. But I think we all believe that once this was discussed publicly, the city would cease to engage in these practices that appear to violate New York state law and accept its standards of humane treatment of the animals entrusted to their care. Previously, the city released a statement demonstrating how accepting food and toys from nonprofit rescues and permitting those groups to pay for medical care for the animal control dogs saved the city tens of thousands of dollars in just one year. A huge portion of those savings was made possible by volunteers from animal rescue groups and donations to the city by nonprofits for the good of the dogs held by animal control. Now that the city has limited the facility's access to volunteers and animal rescue groups, how is the city able to afford the time and expense involved in feeding the dogs, providing medical care for the dogs, providing exercise and proper stimulation, and to ensure all the care, including basic hygiene, medical assessments, vaccines, and all the mandated paperwork needed to record intake, effort to locate the dog's owners in accordance with the law, and basic standards of care when they were not able to do so before? The city has also made statements indicating they've remedied many of the issues related to the quality of the dogs and their care, quality of conditions of the dogs and their care. Since the city could not provide safe and humane care for the dogs for a period going back more than a year, how are you able to do so now, and who's monitoring the city's compliance, given the prior track record? Why is it taking months for the city to determine how to get insurance to cover volunteers? This is not, should not be reinventing the wheel. Shelters, shelters all over the United States and municipalities all over the country use volunteers and have insurance. This shouldn't be a conundrum. The city truly desires to operate a facility that complies with the law and treats dogs in humane manner, ensuring the safety of all. Why is there such a veil around the facility, and why are the public not permitted access? In these tough economic times, can the city truly afford to continue to turn away all the available help that's being offered? In closing, I say with all sincerity, I respect and appreciate that this council meeting starts with an invocation, and tonight in particular, a beautiful prayer to guide us all in our actions, and a reminder of the moral and spiritual obligation to do good. With all due respect for what the city has actually done so far, it just isn't good enough, and we believe as a community, we can do better. I don't understand why we can't all work together to resolve this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Frank Wicks.
Two things related to the Schenectady Police Force, and police in general. I see in the newspaper that the police are looking for another, additional million dollars a year in overtime. That's beyond what they have right now. And, you know, it's clear if you give them a million dollars, they'll use it. What I'm proposing is a zero-based budget for overtime. No, they, they apply for, they do the overtime first, and then they apply for it afterwards, rather than giving them a blank check for a, for an additional merit, million dollars, which, you know, a lot of money in the city of Schenectady and out of the taxpayers. The other is, there's been a lot of abuse in the overtime in the past. We've had no police, you know, taking other jobs, no charging overtime, you know, they've been, you know, not reporting overtime. These have been documented in the newspaper. Even the bigger problem is the high overtime policemen can fabricate, you know, problems that don't exist, and, you know, I was listening about Patrick Morris is one of the high overtime policemen doing that. And finally, the problem with the police, they're too anonymous, and nowhere in the country, as far as I can tell, the police wear numbers, but they should. There's most, most of the police on this apartment are good. I, you know, 52 years in Schenectady, I've seen a lot of good policemen, I've seen bad activity. And a uniform, you can't read the badges. People tell me when they try to get a badge, they cover up their badge. We had Ms. Coleman here a while back, you know, two months ago, the police came to her home without a, without a warrant. They violated her home, violated her family, and I, I would like to know who it is, but I think, you know, the people in the committee here, you know, even you have even more responsibility to know who they, know who they were. So I think what we really have to do is to, we've identified the bad buildings in Schenectady and taken them down. We ought to be able to identify the bad policeman here and know who they are, and then have a way to report their observations, you know, to either Facebook or the police department, you know, webpage. Thank you.
Thank you. P. D. Vorus.
Just a little, not too long after the city awarded a contract to a company in Water Elite to do the uniform service, cleaning service, that there appeared an ad in the paper of Mike Socia at the city mission, and he held a conference at the Best Cleaners in Schenectady to announce that the group at city mission had received a million dollars to do a program for their people. And it just seemed to me that this would have been an ideal time to put them to work immediately. There's nothing like having a little something behind you pushing you to really do the job, get it done properly, and to instill incentive in people to do the best that they can in a competitive, what should be a competition in life. So I thought this is kind of, you filled the cart, you've got to put the right horse onto it, and I, so I, it's just too, too much, too many times, and, and then when the Parker Inn was taken over by the Mazzone family, you know, we had been told that they can take over anything they want around here. They've cornered the market in the food service industry, so, you know, as long as they're here, forget about food service, inviting it in. What you have in here now that's considered fast food, you're looking to get rid of, that's obvious. You're not going to encourage it. It's got its, its money, dollar value group, and that's, it'll just have to be that way. But for somebody to just take over all the problems, this is just to me, a sinkhole, another sinkhole that's going to be created around here. We've got too many buildings on State Street and in the area of the Metroplex Development so-called that are still vacant. The Metropolitan Building has never had occupancy, never. The Siemens Building in the back of Bowtie is more than vacant than it is occupied. Corner of, well, there's just too many vacancies all over the place. And to, to use the city budget, the pocketbook of the people, to maintain prime developers, you don't use the phrase anymore, but you do have your prime developers and your support. The taxpayers are supporting basically what I call warehouses. There aren't too many constructs that they've done around here that go beyond the scope of warehousing. Also, North Star has, has publicly stated that the old Y building is a very sound structure, but it's going to cost $18 million to renovate it.
Please summarize.
And these efficiency apartments are going to be from $700 to $900 a month with residents the same as what has just recently vacated.
Mr. Vorus, your time is up. Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Sanders.
I just want to say, I just want to add on to the last comments. Anytime Angelo Mazzone wants to add jobs into Woodlawn, I'll be more than happy to have him come into Woodlawn. I think Mr. Mazzone has done an excellent job in the city of Schenectady. But I am here to let the council know about awareness. As you've seen in NFL football games, baseball, we've seen about breast cancer awareness, which I think is a great thing. Many of you have seen and heard me talk about myself, seizure disorders, and things like that. Now, this next coming month coming up, there'll be, out in Saratoga County, there'll be a walk out in, out in Saratoga, out in the park for epilepsy people with seizure disorders and things like that. Actually, a whole month is geared toward that, towards that. So I wanted to let the council know, because I think letting the council know about the month of November is just important as breast cancer awareness. No matter what ailment you have, the council should know, everybody should know. And I sat there, and I was thinking, should I come down here? Should I let you know, or shouldn't I let you know? And if I didn't let you know, it'd be just be like last year. November would pass by. Do you know it's a flame that is the symbol? But I want, I had to let the council know, because, you know, it's like a mile and a half down in Saratoga. Do you run it? Do, you know, is it a stroll, or isn't it? And, you know, I run it, because I was a runner, and I'm going to run it this year. And I'm going, I want to be proactive about this in the city, in the county, wherever it is, because this is just as important as if you have cancer, if you have diabetes, no matter what type of, you know, disorder you have, or, you know, if, you, whatever you have. Because, you know, if you go to 3 Washington Avenue, that's where Janine Garrett is, and she runs the whole association for, you know, the Epilepsy Foundation of New York State. And I think, you know, I should have addressed this probably five to 10 years ago in front of whoever the mayor was and the council was at that, at that time. So you would have had a better grasp, and then you could have, like, given a resolution to the, like you do to Hibernians every year. But, oh, this will be the first time I've addressed this, and now you know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, now I will declare this portion of the meeting closed, and move to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Prazzo.
Say tonight, so I made notes. So, over the years, I would say numerous members of this council have voiced concern about derelict buildings, graffiti, quality of life type issues. So we acted on graffiti, and I am proud to say that we've made really good progress this year. We started in May, we just had our last Saturday, this past Saturday, and the properties that we've painted to date, and I will have some numbers put together for you when we're out of budget season, but they've stayed clean. And those that have been re-tagged, we've gone right back and repainted again, and we really have made a difference. And we've made a difference in our youth as well. They've really risen to the occasion, and it's been a great experience. So now we're acting on derelict buildings. So we started on Eastern Avenue with Metroplex, Schenectady IDA, and the Land Bank, and now our Land Bank has received significant recognition. Our Land Bank was awarded the largest grant in New York State by the New York State Attorney General's Office, and that's $3 million to help with derelict buildings by fixing some up and knocking others down that have just fallen into disrepair that isn't fixable. But wait, that's not all. We also, then, the mayor, working with Senator Schumer, gave us another win. Approval has come through on our 108 HUD loan, and this was not an easy lift, because we kind of got a new type of loan that won't put all of the responsibility on the city to acquire all of the properties, but we can do them little by little, which is a great thing. And we celebrated the demolition of a long vacant building on Broadway, one that I drive by a minimum of once a day, and with Senator Schumer, just as we celebrated the demolition on Eastern Avenue with Attorney General Schneiderman. So the big news is that due to this coordinated team effort by the council, mayor, Metroplex, Senator Schumer, Attorney General Schneiderman, the Land Bank, we now have $6 million to help our city neighborhoods. And I just think that's huge news, and I think we need to keep talking about it and keep talking about it, because it's been a process. It's been a process that many of us have had to be patient through, but we are here. And the momentum has started, and I think it's very, very exciting. So, you know, it's been a lot of hard work, and it took patience and tenacity, but it is happening. And in other good news, there was a big piece of machinery outside of the train station, so that's more momentum moving forward. That's just going to be such a centerpiece of our downtown, and it's going to make a tremendous difference. And I just also want to talk about a national survey that was conducted by Firehouse Magazine. Firehouse Magazine is one of the top professional magazines in the fire service, and it's circulated internationally. I went to a firefighters' award breakfast recently, and the chief stated these statistics, and I was just bowled over by them. I think they're very, very strong, and I think we need to keep this in mind. Schenectady Fire Department Rescue One is the second busiest non-transport medical unit in the country. I want to say that again. Schenectady Fire District Department Rescue One is the second busiest non-transport medical unit in the country. Schenectady Fire Department Rescue One is the busiest piece of fire apparatus in the entire state. Schenectady Fire Department Truck One is the 23rd busiest in the country. Truck One is also the fourth busiest in the state, and Engine One is the fourth busiest in the state. Another, I think, extremely impressive statistic, and I know the mayor is in part due to the success of this statistic, 86% of our arson fires in Schenectady result in an arrest. Nationally, the average is 6%. Tremendous, just absolutely tremendous statistic. And Car 22 Platoon Commander is the second busiest battalion chief in the state. So I just think we need to keep in mind, you know, and I'm kind of highlighting the fire department tonight, only because it's kind of a top-of-mind thing, but what our emergency service personnel do for us in the city of Schenectady, is that really, they are incredible, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank them and recognize them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Yes. Mr. Iggy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple things. It's getting colder outside, and leaves are blowing, and I just want to remind people that have leaf blowers, please don't blow them into the street. They clock our storm sewers. That, we don't have any way of picking them up. Street sweepers will not pick up leaves. I think some people believe that they do, but they don't. You should rake them, or blow them, and bag them, and the city will take them away. So I just want to make that reminder, because it makes a mess in the street, and they only blow back on the lawn anyhow, so it's only a short-term fix. I want to thank everybody that came down to speak tonight, just to let you know, we've been working on the budget very hard. We spent a lot of time this month, as we all know. I think we have bunks set up in 110, and hopefully, by the end of this week, we will come to an agreement to pass this budget, and it could be Halloween, which will be good, it'll be, I hope it'll be a treat and not a trick anyhow when we get to that part. But on that, and Mayor, I'm glad you put out the word for Halloween. The, the times for trick-or-treating will be 2 to 4, which is good, I'm sorry, 2 to 8. 2 to 4 would be not too good, but 2 to 8, and that's, that's just Friday night, so that'll, that'll be a good thing. Since the command staff is here from the police department, and people from the rescue groups are here, and I think, I know I have at least a couple of council people that agree, then I think it's time maybe to let everybody sit together and just discuss things that have happened, have not happened, let everything be aired out with people that are concerned... are concerned, because there are concerns. Now, whether they're legitimate concerns, not legitimate concerns, all this, there's only one way to get this straightened out, and that's to have a meeting. And I think it's long overdue, and there should be a meeting, and between the people involved with the police department and these animal rescue groups, and maybe by then we'll have a idea what waiver may be needed, so they can help out. They want to help out. So whatever is needed, whether it can't be done, can be done, we'll just come to a conclusion and get everything out in the open, so we can finally at least start moving ahead with the animal shelter. It's been a long, drawn-out process, and I think that it's time really to let cooler heads prevail, and everybody just sit down and talk, you know, civilly, and just get these things aired out. So hopefully that can be worked out. I talked to Chief Falvo at the demo of the building on Broadway, which everybody in Bellevue is thrilled, and everybody that drives down Broadway should be thrilled, that that's finally gone. And it didn't take much to push that over either. Luckily, it didn't go over by the wind, because it was pretty well rotted. But hopefully in the near future, and we can broker a meeting together when it's, I know we have the budget to work on for this coming week, but when, when that's over with, I would like to see something done, and in a nice manner. I talked to the mayor about this too, and hopefully we can come to some kind of agreement to let everybody meet and air their, their problems or their concerns. I think it'd be a good thing for all. And again, as Marv Isaac said, don't forget, you know, a week from tomorrow is election day. Go out and vote. There's people that gave their lives for us to have this right, and it shouldn't be abused. And I hate to see apathy when it comes to people using their, their rights, and the power of the vote is very, very, very important. And I just urge everyone to go out there and do your civic duty and vote. Doesn't matter who you vote for, vote for who you think is the best candidate, but go out and vote. It's very important. Just to stay home and say it doesn't make a difference, it does. Look at the close elections we've had, you know, in the last few years, very, very close elections. So a vote does matter. So please, go out and vote, do your duty and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. Yes, I have an announcement. The Schenectady County Correction Officer Exam is coming up. The exam date is January 10, 2015, but the filing period for the exam is October 28th, tomorrow, right, to November 24th of 2014. There's, the benefits are paid vacation, personal leave, health insurance, life insurance, pension, uniform, tuition reimbursement, and opportunities for advancement. Salary ranges are from $34,000 to $53,000. Women and minorities are encouraged to, to, to apply. The minimum qualification is a high school diploma or a GED. Further information is available at the Affirmative Action Office at 620 State Street on the second floor, and the phone number is 388-4233, extension 4171. So anyone who's interested in applying for the exam, they will also be having a, a review session. The date is to be announced for that, so that people can prepare to take the exam. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. And just again, with Halloween coming up on Friday, designated, as Mr. Riggi indicated, from 2 to 8 p.m., time for trick-or-treating. The earlier time is really for younger children to go out. All four fire stations will be open, will be supplementing the Halloween festivities by handing out some candy, activity books, and fire safety information. And want people, again, to avail themselves, the city website, there's tips there for fire safety, with putting candles and pumpkins and other things. Just want to make sure that it's done properly and in a safe manner, so that we don't have anyone that gets injured on Friday. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, kind of going along with what Ms. Prazzo was talking about, living in the Stockade. The Green Street Bridge train trestle was painted this weekend, and her folks helped out, as well as Peter Pasternak and Colleen McCauley, and other volunteers from the Stockade, and what a huge difference it makes. So just thanks to everybody there. Also, a reminder that the Downtown Schenectady Improvement Corporation's 12th Annual Building Block Party is next Thursday, November 6, from 5:30 to 8:30 in the GE Theater at Proctors. They always have wonderful food. I think they've got about two dozen restaurants who have donated food, a great silent auction. Tickets are $55 per person, but it's always a good time, so hopefully you'll come. And lastly, just, Ms. Prazzo and I had a chance to attend the Chambers Annual Business Awards Dinner the other night, and the mayor was there also. And I just wanted to congratulate the award recipients, and they included the Zen Asian Fusion Lounge downtown, the Capital District YMCA for their new building at 845 Commons, Richmore Aviation, Quirky, J.T. Pollard Reform Architects, Hodorowsky Homes, and J., excuse me, J. Luke Construction, Marshall and Sterling, and of course Philip Morris was the Business Executive of the Year, which I think is certainly a very, very well-deserved award. So again, congratulations to all of them. And on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier.
Recede.
Excuse me, recess, and, thank you, thank you. We will recess until Friday, October 31st at 4 p.m. I have three notes up here, but I always miss that. So, okay, Mr. Kozier moves it. Second, Ms. Prazzo, all in favor? Aye.